You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for May 4th, 2022. Item 1, to consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of April 6, 2022, and April 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any errors, corrections, admissions, adjustments? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 2, can I get a motion to go into the executive session to discuss pending tax appeals? We will invite in Attorney Perito for this session. Get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in regular session for the record, no votes were taken while in executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for 34 Indian Woods Road?
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for 803 to 873 West Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion to approve the proposed settlement for 1100 West Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion to approve the proposed settlement for 13A Harbor Village.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the proposed settlement for 24C Harbor Village.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the proposed settlement for 255 Thimble Island Road.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the proposed settlement for 2 Linden Point Road.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the proposed settlement for 6 Wood Road.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion to approve the proposed settlement for 15 River Road.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you Attorney Perito. Item 3, to consider and if appropriate approve the request from Parks and Recreation Department to waive the bid for the purchase of a Showmobile Mobile Stage from Wanger Corporation in the amount of $219,982.66. We have Alex Paluzzi here to explain. It did provide information to the board in advance of the meeting. Just for this, this money will be purchased out of the ARPA funds. This was approved, the use of this fund were used, approved both by the Board of Finance and RTM. Alex, you want to just hit the highlights of this?
Yeah, oh wow. We've talked about this stage over the past couple of years, and it seemed to be a great avenue through the use of the ARPA funds for the benefit of the whole community at large. Wanger does have a purchasing cooperative, but through the Finance Office and Office of First Selectmen required us to come before you to request a bid waiver for the Showmobile. Within the purchase cooperative, all the pieces for the Showmobile actually are in the purchasing cooperative. Unfortunately, it never said Showmobile on the purchasing cooperative, so that's why we're before you. Just to give you a little history, we did choose Wanger for multiple reasons, but one of the other options, I was asked if we had reached out to some other vendors, which we did, over the time period, my assistant director, myself, and they didn't get back to us. So we were kind of, you know, moving forward. We had to make some quick decisions about what we were going to do moving forward. A little history on Wanger. Back in 98, when we looked at soliciting pricing for the stage along with the Board of Ed, Public Works and Parks and Rec, we procured a quality, durable, productive, and usable stage with a multitude of programs and activities, concerts, graduations, theater of the arts, culture, and special events the town produces. We hoped to get 10 years of use when we actually received 24, so we knew that it was a great product. We did visit and utilize some of the other Showmobiles, particularly North Haven, for a couple of our parades and also the 75th anniversary of the Columbus Day Parade, and that coincided with the Italian American Club in Branford. We visited communities, New Haven, Guilford, worked along with neighboring North Branford Parks and Rec, which just purchased the same double hit Showmobile through our recommendation. They were looking and they were reaching out also to other vendors and had the same problems that we did, trying to find that type of stage. We were happy with Wanger, the historic successful use of the staging. Stage is one of the most notable staging companies throughout the country, and their reputation reflects that. Some of the other ventures, to let, you know, the public know, but it's not limited to Branford Festival, Branford Jazz, Concerts on the Green, Fireworks, Summer Playground, musters, parades, plays, theater in the arts. Town produces many events and would allow other nonprofits, organizations to utilize the Showmobile as well. Advantage of the Showmobile stage is to be able to trail it to all our parks, playgrounds, schools, rec facilities, green, special events at Foot, Sliny Field, Branford Point, Hammerfield, Branford Hills, Party Park, Shore Beach, Patty Parks, and Vets Park, Young's Pond, West Point Field, Pavey Park, and Madeira Park, Stony Creek, Board of Ed, schools, et cetera. So that's a real big advantage that we do do a lot. Also, we really have been pushing the last couple of years to have more events on the green, and it's not just us, all these other organizations are active in Branford, is a very active community. So we think that, you know, a lot of the time it will be on the green itself, but we have to have it to move it to the, you know, Branford Point or another park or school we're able to do that. So that's all I have to say. Any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any discussion on this?
No, I just want to thank Alex for getting back to me yesterday. I had, I had concerns about, you know, no bid, but when he gave me the information, I was able to do research online for other groups, and that's why I asked tonight about that. And there just doesn't seem to be people out there that are in the same field as Wagner. So I do appreciate you getting back to me.
All right.
Welcome.
All right, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4, to consider and if appropriate approve a third amendment to the lease agreement between the Town of Branford and J&amp;J lasting for an additional three-year lease extension. This is for the quarry property. As stated, it's a third amendment. This is extending their lease for a three-year period. All the terms are, the conditions are the same, it's just the dates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 5, to consider and if appropriate approve an amendment to the lease agreement between the Town of Branford and Zambelli Fireworks for an additional three-year lease extension. They were granted a one-year lease last year, and again, no changes other than moving this to a three-year lease extension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those will go to RTM as well, just for the, put on the record.
Thanks.
All right. Item 6, green use, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Orchard House Medical Adult Daycare for the use of the town green from Saturday, August 27, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to hold a fair festival.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded, discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Dizzy Fish Choir for the use of the town green from Saturday, August 27, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to hold a fair festival.
Actually, that is incorrect. I apologize.
Oh, is this, I'm just looking at it.
Yes.
May 16th, May 17th?
Exactly.
All right, let me correct that. The dates will be, and this is for, the activity will be choir rehearsal to take place on May 16th, May 17th, May 23rd, May 31st, and June 6th. Time of event will be 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So be corrected, can I get a?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move, second, discussion, hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 7, reappointments, Green Committee, Cynthia Jasek, David Colley, and Bonnie McCurdy, terms to expire May 31, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, okay, it's move seconded, discussion, yes.
Bonnie McCurdy, is that currently on?
Yeah, can you come up? I actually, you know, as you were stating it, I was wondering, I mean, I know she had attended a meeting in the winter.
My name is Lynn Salt, I live in Riverwalk.
Yep.
And she is not listed as a member of that committee. She represent, I think you wanted to represent the Trinity Church, and the person on the board on that committee right now is Ann Freeman. If you want to extend her term, then you should be able to do that next month because it wasn't in the agenda this time.
Well, we can add it to the, that was mistake.
That's a mistake, the list must have gotten.
Yes, it was a mistake.
There was, the list wasn't probably updated, so we'll just.
Well, it was on the, you had it correct on the website.
Right, it's correct on the website, but the hard copy that was in my office had not been updated.
Well, as a public person, the only piece of paper I have is the website, right?
So, okay.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do, can I get a motion to add, remove Bonnie McCurdy? Ann Freeman replaced her, so we'll put that in.
Second.
Move seconds, we're adding Ann Freeman. Now, it's been moved and seconded to, for the, for the three names put forward, and I'll take that for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, statues, item carries. Inlands Wetlands Commission, Peter Basserman, Melissa Fanaro, terms to expire May 31, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded, discussion, hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Inlands Wetlands Alternate, Jessica Probulis, term to expire May 31, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded, discussion, hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 8, correspondence, don't have any. Item 9, any other business?
Aye.
Another business? Right here? Okay, I guess Trish first?
My name is Trisha Anderson, I'm District 1 representative. With me is John Alphon. He lives in the apartments above Archie Moore's?
No, next door.
Next door, my apologies. It is the address of?
Main Street.
I saw it on here.
968 Main Street.
968 Main Street, thank you. John came to me with some concerns about the parking in the municipal parking lot in the back. Everybody knows it's a problem with all of the activities in the green. It's obviously with what we just heard, it gets worse as the town gets more popular. So we're just coming to the Selectmen to see what, if anything, is going to be done in the future about parking, making more available to residents, employees, customers, just drawing it to your attention that there is a problem with public parking. And John, do you want to mention anything in specific?
Sure, I don't want to be misinterpreted as someone who's complaining. I've been at that apartment for 15 years, and I truly love Branford. I love where I live. It's exciting to see new businesses come into town and not have vacant buildings, and you know, those two businesses, the two recent businesses that have opened, I'm not sure about the new restaurant, but those are high, those are high attractive businesses. They're going to generate, one of the restaurants which is already open is attracting, you know, a significant amount of new business, which of course requires more parking, and then we have another popular business coming in. And you know, I applaud the town for doing that, bringing in these, these businesses that are going to help with the tax base in town, et cetera. The problem is, there's 20 people between the apartments that are above the now Archie Moore's and three apartments where I live. It's extraordinarily difficult to find parking at any time of the day up until 10 o'clock at night. And I'll just give you some recent examples. A friend of mine visited last Monday, drove around the entire, the entire loop between Harrison Avenue out on Main Street and back again five times with no success. It's discouraging my, my people from even wanting to venture into town to visit. The other day, which is the second part of this request, not this request, this, this information I want to bring to you, is the limited amount of handicap parking. There's one spot on Main Street, there's two in the municipal lot. I noticed a car, it could have been an Uber driver, had to actually pull into the intersection of Harrison and Main to let an elderly gentleman get out to go into a wheelchair to be brought over to the doctor's office. That's how significant this problem is becoming in the center of town for us. And when I contacted both Trish and Patty about this, they were most receptive to bringing it to you. I'm not looking to complain, I'm willing to, to help in any solution, you know, do whatever I can to bring this to, to the attention of, of those who could possibly make a difference. I don't have a solution. I don't have a proposed solution, but this is, this is a problem. I think as, as the town continues to grow, you're going to be faced with, you know, some, some real significant issues. I was just telling Patty and Trish, with the road rebuild next year, I have no idea where everybody's going to park during that time. I don't even know the timeframe of the project, but it's a significant issue that impacts, I think, not just the residents there, but, but also townspeople coming in. You know, I am a taxpayer there, I don't pay, I pay rent, but I pay for my car, I can't park my car.
Just to, so I'm clear, for the residents, so you've, you're a resident there, you live in one of the apartments, there is not dedicated parking for any of the residents?
No, sir.
Not in the municipal parking lot?
Not in the municipal lot.
No, but it, it, is, there's a lot behind, I know a couple of the old Castillon Building and other, and I, I thought there was a sign up that it was for tenant parking only.
No, so that is a point of confusion. There's a building, I believe it's owned by Akara Associates, he was one of my neighbors. They own the building on the exact corner of Main and Harrison, and they do have a parking lot with a little underground parking.
Yeah.
That's where the sign is.
Yeah.
Because that is private property at that point.
And then, but that, behind, the lot next to it that has, you're, you have the main alleyway, you know, aisle going back, connecting Harrison and?
In the municipal.
And the other, you know, coming out, but the, the building that you live in, there's a lot that, that's off of that, between the main parking lot and the building, that's not tenant parking?
No, there's no tenant parking whatsoever.
Archie Moore's, I mean, got squared in?
Yeah, squared in, and then I thought even next to it, I thought that said, but, but we'll look into it.
No.
I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the issue that you raise in terms of, I mean, it is a business district, so as, as, you know, businesses come in and, and we improve, you know, the, and attracts people, which we want, right?
Sure, absolutely.
But, and I know the last time I was on a meeting with the Planning and Zoning, when they were discussing making some changes to the, the parking requirements, and, you know, the, I recall, I think one of the members even said, you know, you know, if there, if we determine that there is an issue with parking, you know, this is something that the town will have to look at and address, and we've always said that, even with, you know, there's some other municipal lots that may not be utilized to the full extent that they can be utilized, right? Over on Hillside, there's a lot, you know, depending on hours, it's not, and I think, you know, part of it is people aren't aware that it is there. You know, and one way we can address that, which has been discussed when we've done some, you know, the recent studies, the TOD study, the PAOCD, I think it even came up, and through the, the zoning commission meetings is, you know, doing a wayfinding study to kind of, you know, identify where available parking is, public parking, so people begin to utilize those. You know, we, we certainly, you know, are looking to get to a point where also now it's discouraging people coming down here, but to your point is well taken. If, you know, we have some, some businesses now that are attracting, you know, people to our town at maybe different hours that didn't occur in recent, you know, time, you know, like when you first moved in there. So now there's more people are coming home that are living there, and you also have people coming in to, you know, enjoy these restaurants, and that has increased. So certainly, I'll talk to zoning and the town planner, and to see, you know, with the next steps in terms of doing a study and addressing it.
Yeah, just to.
And I just wanted, because you did bring up the road reconstruction, and that is something I can tell you that has been, although we're focused, that project is really looking at the road and reconstructing some amenities along that road to address, you know, pedestrian safety. But we were very clear that we could not lose any?
Spots.
Spots with this project. We had to try to maintain as many, many spots as we could, and handicap parking to ensure that we're meeting the correct counts for those.
You know, I think one of the significant points that I just want to reemphasize that that Trish brought up, is there's a significant number of employees. There's a lot of people who work in town, you know, that use that lot, and, you know, sometimes I see them at 9:00 in the morning, they're scrambling to find a spot so they can get to work. I mean, it's a juggling act, and as I said, I don't have a solution, but.
We have a problem.
I just think it's some, yeah, it's a problem that we have to plan for.
No, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I'll keep you updated. Any other business? Patty, did you have anything? You were with this? Okay, all right. All right, Dan?
Good evening. Last year, we spoke about the quarry being surveyed, so we knew what the boundaries of that quarry were, and you said that the Anderson was going to do a survey on that. I was wondering where that is and what's, has, is the outcome of that?
So the survey is, has been completed. There are some areas that I think they need to address, maybe in terms of where that was different than they had thought. I haven't reviewed it yet with the engineering department, and we have not met, it was just recently just completed. So an email just probably came out, maybe within the last couple of weeks or a week or two, stating that it was completed, and I actually just had a phone conversation with Mr. Anderson, really on another matter regarding operations up there, and he did bring up about getting together to discuss the quarry operations as well as any concerns that may be with encroachment. I know you may be aware that representatives too of the land trust were interested in this, as they have a property that, butts it, and I know there's been discussion going on between all parties.
Right, well, I was understanding that, that expansion of the blasting was going to be limited until that was completed, and that, that blasting has expanded toward Red Hill Road significantly in the last month and a half, two months, to the point where, as you know, those trails have been, trails that traditionally were, were walking trails for the recreation area, have now been closed and are not allowed to go that close to the quarry. So that's a concern to me if they, if that survey hasn't been finalized and we are still operations as normal with that. That's a little bit of a concern because, you know, it's hard to put the stone back in once you take it out.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the survey has been completed.
Okay.
And as you, as you're well aware, I believe through our previous conversations, that, you know, engineering department, both the assistant engineer, town engineer have been involved in these discussions with the butters as well as the operations of the quarry.
Ken, is it possible for you to send me a copy of that, of those?
The survey?
The survey, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can see that. I, I just want to get a feel for what that, that is. As they move closer, my house rocks more. That's just the way it is. Second thing is, is in January, you, the RTM approved the blight ordinance. Where is progress on that? I mean, I, I see several properties that are within short distance of my house that are definitely candidates for some type of enforcement on blight. The properties are just going, nobody's taking maintenance on it. What you see is, you know, a house that needs a roof, a new roof, they put a tarp on it, you know, and tarp now is all ripped. Things of that sort. So where, where is the, where is that as far as the enforcement of this?
Well, as you, you referenced the ordinance that the RTM adopted this past year, that went into effect in January.
Right.
But, you know, the RTM passed an ordinance, but without any funding for position, or we don't have a job description, which that is not on the RTM, that's on the town hall, and I've been working with HR to, which he has created a, a description and looking at what other towns have done, and now it's really just identifying an individual that can perform that task as well as secure funding for that.
So.
So it probably won't go into effect till July 1st.
Will that be out of contingency? Will it be out of this money that we have for, that 8.1 million, is that part of that?
No.
Or how is that funding coming?
It goes through the Board of Finance, RTM request, just like every other funding source does, for our positions, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it'll come out of registrars.
That's good to hear, that's good to hear. We're bare bones as it is. So that, I'm just trying to get a handle on it.
Yeah.
As you know, there is numerous people who are anxious for this to get going, and it's not just, you know, lifelong citizens of Branford, but people who live next door to blighted property. Now their property is not worth as much because, you know, you got an eyesore next door and the house looks like it's going to fall down. That's just not the way Branford wants to do that, right? I mean, so I just plead that we could maybe speed this process up, but I know that, I know that wheels of government sometimes don't go as fast as they like.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead. No, so when we identify, we'll get funding and we'll appoint a, we have to appoint per the ordinance, this body is the appointing authority for a blight, blight officer?
No, I, I would think that just as a, maybe a strategy is to put something up on the town website to have people be able to put in information as to property they think might qualify for that. And then you'll have a list of those things, and that will make that, that enforcement officer's job somewhat easier in that he doesn't have to visit every building in town, he has some input from the citizens.
Well, that's where it's going to be kind of, for the ordinance, it's really, we're not going out and.
Right, right.
It's to address issues that come, that are brought forward, evaluated to see if they meet the threshold, and then there's a process, not only the blight officer, but engaging other departments, which we have followed that process. We've addressed a number of process, properties through this process where.
this upcoming paving season? It seems like there are a lot of roads in town that need to be paved.
Well, that, that is true, and a lot of it has to do with the extensive utility work that was, that occurred this past year plus, throughout pretty much almost every neighborhood or every section of town. So, that repair work, first of all, I said that utility work needs to be completed prior to any final patch and prior to the town coming in and doing any repaving. So, there's been coordination going on with the gas company, that's who's doing this, most of the utility work that you see occurring through town. You see, you know, certain sections is already underway, Harbor Street, that area is one, Public Works is out there now replacing the manhole tops. The contractor for the utility company is coming in and doing the permanent patch, and then we will do final pave after that work is completed. But, keep in mind, the utility company is coming, because I had, you know, heard from some residents saying, well, it seems that the work has been completed, when are they coming back, you know, or to pave this road? And what, you know, in a lot of neighborhoods, they're replacing the mains, but they still need to come back and dig up the road to connect the services to those mains. So, where you may think that they're, they're done and they're completed, unless they come in and tie the service in, they're not done. So, we are doing a paving this spring. Yeah, like I said, it's, the, the prep work is underway, so you'll see, see that work, and then we'll do another one in the fall, another paving round in the fall.
As you, as you know, driving into, into work every day--
Yeah.
It is a challenge sometimes, driving the roads, and it's also a challenge sometimes navigating the roads, because they will, a road will be closed unannounced, and you're driving into town, and that happened just at the, at the bottom of, of the hill, just as East Main Street starts. When they did that, they, they had you doing a detour all around town before you could get to Town Hall.
Oh, you mean when they were doing, over the fall, in the summer?
Right. And some of, so some of this stuff is, is, I think it would help if we had some notification before time, either on the website or something, so people can say, well, look, let me just take a different route before I get to the point where there's a logjam, right?
Yeah, this, this was, not to cut you off, but when, the utility work, we do not have any oversight and, and coordination when they're actually doing the work. So, in particular, through the center of town, you had two utility, you had the water main being replaced, and then the gas as well being replaced, and at times, they were both there working. You know, it would change day by, you know, there, there wasn't a, a schedule that they would, you know, they may have, you know, give us a schedule, but it was very rarely adhered to because it all depended on how far they were able to get that day, it all depended on what, you know, especially when you're working in a, a area like that and you're replacing a water main that's 100 years old, 100, actually, yeah, over 100, 125 years old, and gas line that's, you know, cast, you know, you have so many variables. So, they were moving around, it wasn't really even to that, the morning of, that we would really, you know, know where, what sections they would have to close and isolate, and when till the police were able to come and then redirect the, the traffic. So, it was very little notice for us on that, when that occurs.
Aren't these utilities supposed to be working in cooperation with you? I mean, a, a utility would not just go into town and start digging up a road without notifying your office.
Oh, no, they, they'll tell us, but they, they have a right to come in and they're gonna, they'll, they'll, we'll know when they're coming in and doing the work, but when you're saying about, like, you know, whether they're working on that road, or, you know, let's use Roger Street, they were just working over there for a while, in terms of what's coming, they're not, they're not notifying us a week in advance of, like, hey, this is gonna be closed from this section to section, then this day we're gonna be able to open up here. It, it really did change throughout the project in terms of when they were gonna be there. That, that was, and again, we've, we've put notice out there during the, that work, I mean, yes, there was frustration on, on the towns part too, in terms of trying to coordinate, making sure there was access to businesses, telling, you know, that, you know, keeping that open. And that's where, you know, bringing up the, with the reconstruction, one of the things that we keep, you know, trying to let the residents, the business owners know, I mean, you know, at least with that project, we are managing it, we are coordinating it, so we're the ones that are gonna be able to, you know, control and--
Yeah, it's just a shame, because, you know, businesses are suffering, were suffering when they, because you couldn't get to businesses, and in fact, an example was, at the same time that they were fixing that road right there at, at the start of East Main Street, right there down by the eye care physician's place, right at that light, they were fixing that. At the same time, within, I think it was the same day in fact, because I went up and went around and I said I'd go through the parking lot through Hillside, and they were fixing it there too. I had an appointment in one of those buildings, and I said, well, I'll go and I'll park in the back there, and they were, you know, they had the whole place all closed off. So, I'm sitting there going, well, now, you know, where am I gonna go? I had to go, you know, kind of a loop around town, it was just, it's, it's kind of an inconvenience, but I'm thinking, gee, if I'm business in the center of town, I'm, I'm not too happy, because you gotta be losing, you know, some customers, just because, you know, you couldn't get there. So, and I understand that, I understand utilities are some--
The water main is 125 years old. I mean, it was time for that to be replaced. You know, it's gonna happen, I know, and we try to manage it.
It's not a complaint, it's not a complaint about the work, it's just a complaint about the process by which, you know, businesses and people aren't notified in, in a timely enough manner so that they can make other plans. And it's, and it's, you know, it makes it a, a difficult situation for both the business owners and people who are just traveling through town because they have, you know, whatever business to do.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
All right.
Got one quick thing. How are we doing with, why aren't we waiting for the attorney for the enforcement of the parking lots? I mean, Stony Creek Park, the firehouse parking lot there?
No, actually, we had that, we approved those--
We approved the work there, but I thought we were waiting on something for enforcement aspect of it, or we--
Oh, there was something just to, I think, I wanted to just confirm with the PD how that would be enforced, and that's all set. And actually, signage was, is gonna be placed there soon, and actually, the assistant engineer just forwarded me the striping plan, just actually today, coincidentally.
Yeah, because you had, you gave us a layout a few months ago.
Yeah, and they just redid it to, to have the designated parking for the fire department, and so that's all set.
All right, thanks.
All right, any other--
I apologize, I just wanted to make this up. But coming up on Saturday, May 14th, we're having our annual fishing derby that we brought back to Chet's Pond on Tabor Drive, and just to let you know that, please get, you know, contact the, go online or contact the Parks and Rec Department. We have, at this point, we have 60 signed up, meaning parents and girls and boys, and we're actually gonna be stocking the pond this Friday in the morning with, we're adding 300, we're adding 300 more rainbow trout, 10 to 12 inches, 11 to 13, somewhere in that range, and then we're also gonna tag a few of them this year, so just wanna let everyone know and out there, it's a great activity. The Elks Club helps us run it, really exciting, so it'll be a hop in place that's on May 14th, Saturday, May 14th, so, week from Saturday, just--
And the tagged ones, there's a prize?
Three tags, yeah. I can't tell you what the prize is yet.
All right. And then, but they--
It's a shovel.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is adjourned, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.